Anytime, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Council, or Mayor Pro Tem Muldoon and Councilmember Blom are currently absent.
Okay, we're going to now turn to current business, and the first item of clarification of items on the consent calendar, and before that, Ms. Leong has some comments.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I just, on the consent calendar tonight, there is, you have an item three, which is the second reading for the Marine Activities Permit Ordinance Changes. As part of the last meeting, there was a request from council to also include for review the Marine Activities Permit Application, just take a look at them. And I've gotten some good feedback on those, so I would like to do some additional work on those and bring that back. That doesn't change the ordinance itself, this is more administrative of the application form, that I would just like to do a little more cleanup and editing on those and bring those back at a later date for additional review by council.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Brenner, do you need clarification regarding any items? Councilmember O'Neill? Councilmember Dixon?
No.
Councilmember Duffield? And I have, I have none also. So the next item is a review of restaurant parking and outdoor dining requirements. Before we start, does anyone have a conflict they would like to announce regarding this item? Seeing none, do we have a staff report here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Avery. I'm Simone Jurges with the Community Development Department. With me is Matthew Schneider, he's principal planner. We do have a two-part study session. This first part of the study session is a review of restaurant parking and outdoor dining. This is really a discussion that we'd like to have with the city council and get your input. We have some ideas with regards to the outdoor dining. There's been a lot of requests from the restaurants during COVID for continuing the outdoor dining as we come out of COVID, as we unwind out of COVID. We have a number of restraints in our code with regards to parking. We want to share our ideas with you and just get your input. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to Matthew Schneider, thank you.
Thank you, Simone. Good afternoon, Mayor Avery, council members. So I'm going to go ahead and jump right in and discuss outdoor dining. And so, as Simone indicated, we've issued a number of emergency temporary use permits to allow outdoor dining areas during the COVID pandemic. Obviously, this allows restaurants to continue to operate, and they've, you know, proven to be popular. And so, considering a code amendment to allow these on a permanent basis, brings to mind a couple of issue areas that need to be considered. In terms of parking, obviously, when you're converting parking spaces to outdoor dining areas, there's potential for impact to parking and pushing parking off-site. And so, we would want to study and develop standards to make sure that we're doing it in a balanced way. You have other constraints such as handicap parking spaces, ADA requirements, which would need to be factored in. I think many of us would recognize that a lot of the existing outdoor dining is what I would describe as utilitarian, and it's, you know, obvious because of the pandemic as to why it is that way. But moving forward, we'd want to develop design standards to make sure that outdoor dining is aesthetically integrated into the site and the surrounding community. You know, there's also standards in terms of public safety, lighting, noise, things along those lines that would need to be developed. We see outdoor dining occurring in two realms, obviously, on private property predominantly. Outdoor dining is in private parking lots, but it is also in the public realm, in public spaces. It's in our right-of-way, it's in some of our park areas as well. And so, you know, that again triggers the need to really closely analyze parking impacts. You can see from this slide, we've highlighted some of the areas of McFadden Square where temporary outdoor dining is currently occurring. If we are to develop standards to do this on a more permanent basis, obviously, we're going to have to analyze the impact to the parking supply and make sure, again, we have a balanced approach moving forward. As with many decisions the council has to consider, there are trade-offs, there's pros and cons. Obviously, expanding outdoor dining can be viewed as an economic development tool. The leasing or licensing of public right-of-way potentially could be a revenue stream. And obviously, incorporating design standards could greatly improve the aesthetics. You know, on the downside, you know, someone needs to pay for the improvements. You know, there's long-term sidewalk maintenance costs, things along those lines. And again, I had mentioned concerns about public parking. I want to switch gears and talk about restaurant parking, and I'll touch on each of these bullet points individually. Before I get too far, I just kind of want to give a quick synopsis of how we calculate restaurant parking. You see before you a floor plan for a restaurant. And when we think of parking, generally, you know, a developer comes in, we look at the use, you know, we have parking standard tables, it prescribes a square footage, you know, for every 100 square feet, you need one parking space, for every 250 square feet, whatever the case may be. In the case of restaurants, it's a little different, the way we look at it. Instead of looking at the overall square footage of the building, we look at what's called the net public area. And so, in this slide, I've highlighted what that net public area would be for this restaurant example. And what we do is we exclude the kitchen, the back of house, restaurants, I'm sorry, restrooms, things of that nature. And we use a range, it's not a fixed number. And so, what we, at a minimum, or it's a range of 30 to 50 square feet per parking space of net public area. And, you know, what influences that range? It's really the operational characteristics, the floor plan, the seating capacity, is there entertainment? I would say, overall, the most common ratio applied is one per 40, meaning every 40 square feet of net public area, we're requiring one parking space for a restaurant. So, that net public area approach is pretty unique to Newport Beach. And what you can see from this table here is, we've surveyed some of the other surrounding communities, and you'll see Newport on the top again, that's net public area. All the other information on this table is based on gross floor area. So, what's the standard in other communities or sort of the industry practices? You look at the overall building side, and you don't dive into the net public area. And when you look closer, what you see is, the trend indicates one per 100 square feet of gross floor area. And so, you know, we think there's an opportunity here, one, switching to a gross floor area format. It just simplifies the whole process, it provides more certainty to applicants, restaurant developers, they don't have to wait for staff to analyze and come up with the ratio for them when they're considering properties. And it might provide more flexibility if we were to establish a one per 100 gross floor area ratio.
So let's go back a slide to, now that we've seen that. So in this slide, it looks like, you know, maybe half to two-thirds is accounted for in the public. But when we're doing this, all the other spaces are still being used, for example, by staff and employees who also need parking. And so, how do we account for those employees who obviously are using other areas that are not considered the public area when we're accounting for parking if we're using this metric?
So, it's assumed that, and understood that there are those employees, but that also comes into the operational characteristics and why there is a range. And so, if there's an indication that it's going to be more employee-centric, I should say, then it will be on the lower end of the range. Again, it can go all the way up to 50. And I should point out that, you know, obviously, if you're 50% net public area, 50% gross, a one per 100 gross floor area ratio would be a wash in terms of a change or a code amendment. But, again, we see most of our restaurants coming in at one per 40 net public area, so there could be some opportunity there.
Okay.
And so, another area that we think warrants consideration is the increase in popularity of ride share. Uber, Lyft, things along those lines have really become commonplace, much more widely utilized. And we're starting to see emerging data that suggests that it's actually reducing parking demand for restaurants from patrons utilizing the services.
And Mayor Avery, council member, if I add, you know, there's not a lot of data to support this yet. It's hard to find case studies. Talking to some of our parking consultants, there are research papers, there are a little bit of data floating out there in the United States that people are looking at. And the trend seems to be a 25% reduction if you provide an onsite parking space that services that ride share. Surveying the Orange County cities, no one's ever tried this yet. This is really a new concept, no one's really kind of stepped forward to do it. So this will be a kind of a talking point, and we'd like to get some further direction if the council wants us to look into this further or implement some type of reduction in parking for ride share.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Oh, Duffy's.
Mr. Duffy, go.
Thank you. So, obviously, there's some places where these, in the images, I saw people on the sidewalk where there's no parking, and they seem to be comfortable under an umbrella and a chair and such, and a table. So I would call that the easy, the easy ones, the low-hanging fruit, if you will. Do you have any rough estimate of what, of what percentage of low-hanging fruit restaurants there are out there versus the ones that were just taking an actual parking place? Is it 10% is all that we can do that with, or is it half?
So, just, thank you, Councilmember Duffield. So, looking at, we've issued about 110 emergency use permits for restaurants to go outdoors. I would say, of the 110, you're looking at a very small percentage, maybe 10 to 15 of those restaurants are the low-hanging fruit, which is on the sidewalk.
Thank you.
May I ask you a question? Couple of questions, just to follow up on, out of 110, do you know offhand how many restaurants we have in Newport Beach?
I vaguely remember it's up to, maybe up to 400.
So this is 25% approximately?
I would say 25 to 1/3. That's, I think that's a good ratio.
That, if this were to go to its ultimate conclusion, that we, the city would be providing a benefit to 25% of the restaurants?
And thank you, Councilmember Dixon. What I don't know is how many of those restaurants have chosen to completely shut down during the COVID stage, and I've heard more and more. So I don't know how many would take advantage of this or not, but clearly, there's at least the 25% that we know of.
And then, back to the previous slide, just explain it to me further, if you would. I mean, some of these other cities that are going to 1 to 100 square foot, I mean, Irvine doesn't have a parking problem, a parking constraint problem for most of Beach May, but all cities are different. And certainly, the parking requirements on the peninsula are extremely limited. And when there's not parking, the patrons are pushed into the residential streets. So, I'm just obviously pointing out the obvious, that it's, these are not analogous situations with other cities. And there may be trends to make it easier for businesses, but we do have unique circumstances on the peninsula where we're right now currently short. Now, also with the Uber or Lyft situation, I think that's, we'll see where that trend goes. Those cars need more than one parking space if they're picking up and dropping off, so it's not just a one-for-one. Anyway, as you well know, there's further study that needs to go in to understand that impact of the Uber ride-sharing alternative. All right, thank you.
So again, just reiterating, the thought process is that we would study the impact of the ride share and come up with some recommendations for allowances for reductions. And again, as Simone indicated, current preliminary data is indicating around 25%. Along a similar vein, bicycle use is something that we think should be considered in the realm of parking. Newport Beach has a beach culture and climate, biking is really popular in the community. There's actually been a biking boom as a result of COVID. I think there's been like 120% increase in bike sales in the last year. Many local residents use bikes to get to restaurants or other amenities, and it's not unusual for visitors to either bring a bike with them or rent a bike from one of our many bike rental shops and use it to get around. And so, we think there's an opportunity to study this as well, and restaurants that could provide parking, I'm sorry, bike racks or parking, bike storage facilities could allow for additional reductions when we look at their parking overall. And so that's something, again, a tool that we could study. I should point out that the amendments that we're discussing, they would impact development standards in the coastal zone. And so ultimately, you know, they would need to go before the Coastal Commission and get Coastal Commission approval. Whenever you're talking about parking, you also need to balance that with public access. And so, whatever we bring forward, we have to be mindful of that. And it's very likely the case that Coastal would want some sort of post-implementation monitoring to make sure that we aren't having a negative impact. Also want to mention that there are some commercial uses in state tidelands. And so, any kind of changes that would impact those areas, we'd have to coordinate, and there could be some limitations. So I just wanted to point that out as well. So in general, as Simone indicated in the beginning, we're looking for direction and feedback on the amendments I've discussed, you know, the use of public areas for outdoor dining, permanent versus temporary, seasonal, year-round, going to a gross floor area for restaurant parking, the one per 100. I didn't mention this, but fast casual restaurants are something that is becoming more popular. And, you know, it's a little bit different of an operational use than a standard traditional sit-down restaurant. And so, we might want to dive in closer and look at the parking ratios for those as well. So we have that as a suggestion. Again, the reduction for ride share and bike parking. And then, there is an existing council policy, L21, for sidewalk café standards. And so, whatever amendment we bring forward, we'd like to evaluate the policy and make any necessary recommended changes. And we welcome your feedback or questions.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you. Well, there's more to it than this, right? I mean, just in terms of how much of the sidewalk, current uses of the sidewalk, how would we analyze taking away that public space, the public use space? How would we, that's one question, how would we determine the capacity allocation on the sidewalk? I don't know what other, what formulas exist, would the capacity of the existing restaurant remain the same, it just gets apportioned between the outside space and the interior space? So all of these questions, do we need to, are you looking for guidance now?
I think so. I think from a staff standpoint, we are looking for some guidance as, you know, if you believe that it's necessary to look at the interior occupant load versus the exterior. Right now, you do have a council policy, the sidewalk café standard, which allows additional dining on the outside, which is in addition to what they have on the interior to go on the public sidewalk. So that's already allowed per council policy. We would just like to review that and make sure that's consistent. So you do have this existing policy. We'd like to get some feedback on, especially McFadden Square, where we see a lot of that outdoor dining going into the public parking spaces. You know, is that something that you'd like us just to study to see what would be the cost to make those permanent? Again, this is just more of a discussion standpoint, and, you know, what's the loss of parking? So those areas, we haven't studied yet, but I think there's an opportunity there for restaurants to either lease spaces that the city provides, it won't be given to them. And then, if that's something that council wants us to look at, you know, do they get to increase their occupant load with utilizing that outdoor dining area, too?
I think there are a lot of questions here. So what's the timeframe from this? Are we talking, just to clarify, right now, we're under the governor's emergency order that we've extended the emergency powers to you to extend these public encroachments?
That's correct.
Are you looking for the council to get back to you, would this take place during the emergency order or post-emergency order, post-COVID?
Right. So all of this is really to help us unwind out of COVID. So this would be post-COVID. You know, does the council want us to do any changes or any studies now? Because it takes time for us to peer agreements with consultants, study it, and get some public input, and then come back to the council with recommendations. So we'd like to get feedback more earlier now, so we have time to work on this. And maybe towards the end of the year, we could actually come back with actual recommendations. Again, it's everybody's guess when the state will reduce their emergency order, when the city will unwind out of their emergency status, too. But we're currently under an emergency proclamation.
And then you mentioned the design standards. Clearly, we've looked the other way as far as these encroachments and these various tents, I think, in McFadden Square especially. You see everything. So I would like to see some uniformity as part of our ultimate design, but I'll come up with those comments later. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, so let's say that, let's say we said, okay, we would like to do all of these. What next? I mean, what's your, what's the process? Because it's going to be a long process.
Right. So if the council would like us to study it, then we'd hire a consultant. If these recommend, these suggestions up on the screen, you want us to implement, then we'll come back with a resolution to initiate the code change and start working on each one of these as part of a code amendment. We would do some community outreach, so we understand what the business community is looking at. We would get some of the comments from the, just any member of the public. Once we do that, we'll, we can definitely package it up, come back with a new study, another study session, if you'd like, to say, these are going to be recommendations, which would be generally what you see on the screen plus the public comments. Or we can just continue with amending the code, go through the planning commission, and then from the planning commission, come back to the city council.
Well, I mean, part of it is, I think, I think we ought to have the, I'm not sure I can say, hey, let's move forward right away, because, you know, to Councilmember Dixon's point, there's, there's going to be different, there might be different approaches being taken in Corona del Mar, for example, than, than the peninsula or, you know, other areas of the city. But, I mean, we're, it strikes me that we're kind of far behind on the, on the technology now. I mean, this, our current parking code is designed around the idea that didn't, that Uber didn't exist, and it does now. And so, we should be taking into account the idea that a lot of, there's a lot of takeout through Uber Eats and, and, you know, a whole bunch of those. So, we should have spot, we don't need to have a spot thinking that someone's going to be there for an hour. I mean, there's going to be a lot of turnover in some of these parking spots because we're just going to be getting food in and out. We have a lot more biking, so it strikes me that we should probably be looking at, how many, you know, how many bike stalls do we need before we can get rid of a parking spot requirement for, for a parking, for a restaurant? I think there's probably a difference also when we're talking about the, you know, the parking requirements for some of the restaurants. The, some of them have been using their own private parking spots versus the public parking spots, and that seems to be doing okay. And maybe there's a, you know, maybe there's a difference in for seasonality as well. You know, for peak summer moments, you know, the spring would be great, and the fall would be great for more outdoor dining, where we don't need as much public parking in certain areas of the city. And then during the summer, we kind of pull that back, and, you know, we need more parking. But what I'm saying is, I don't think we're at a point where we can start initiating a code change, but it, I would love to see all of this studied, frankly. I'd like to see our parking requirements come a little bit more modern and take in, you know, the actual realities of what we're seeing right now. And, so anyway, I'm, I'd like to see us move forward with all of this. I would, I'd probably be, I'd be up for a consultant on this, given the complexity of taking a look at it. But, and look, I think there would need to be some outreach and discussion with some of the folks. But I mean, if you're looking, so for example, Corona del Mar, I think some of the residents would love to have the ability to have, I think, you tell me if I'm wrong. But I think that, I think if we were able to allow for, if we pulled a parking spot off of PCH, for example, but allowed that to be a, an area where people can pull up to have valet, then we would have fewer people parking in the residential streets around Corona del Mar because they'd be able to pull up valet really fast. And then, you know, there'd be a parking require, they could park somewhere, they'd have, they wouldn't be allowed to park the car in valet in the residential areas, as opposed to what we're dealing with now.
That's actually our second part of our study session. We'll be talking about that curb management plan and having consultants on that.
Yeah. So that, my general thought is, I mean, everything has changed so dramatically for restaurants in the last couple of years anyway, let alone the fact that we, we've got so much, you know, you're just seeing, you're seeing a very different parking management requirement now than we used to see. I'd like to see a study of all of it, and I'd be okay with a consultant on it.
Mr. Brenner?
I think my initial response is probably like many of ours, that we're really enjoying eating outside when we can. And so, and I've been asking my residents about this already, and a lot of people are saying, oh, yeah, we'd love to be able to continue that. At the same time, Corona del Mar is very different from some of the other areas. And I'm also getting complaints from the residents who are saying, we've been really patient, we want our restaurants to thrive and survive. And, you know, we have kind of ignored some of the inconveniences during this time, but it really is inconvenient to us to have people eating outside our bedroom windows at, you know, 10 o'clock at night. So I think we do need to look at different areas differently, and we need to do a lot of public outreach. We definitely need to get to our chambers and our merchants associations and our residents associations and homeowners associations to find out, you know, how supportive people will continue to be for this after restaurants are able to open inside and serve at the bar and that sort of thing again. So I think it's a more complex issue than it appears to start with, and we will need to do a lot of outreach about that. When it comes to the parking, I love the idea of having Uber and Lyft places where they can drop people off, but it needs to be on Pacific Coast Highway. It doesn't need to be, you know, in the parking lot that's adjacent to the bedrooms of our residents. So, we, you know, we need to look at it real carefully and study it and look at, and perhaps a consultant is the way to go. But we need to look at it and look at all the different scenarios.
Understood. Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you so much. I think all this stuff is great. Thank you again for being nimble in this tough time. And I always support this, I'll move it forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Do we have any other council comments?
I just wanted to put in my support as well. And I like Mr. O'Neill's comments. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, I'm all for studying all these things. It, it's interesting when you look at the Newport Pier area in the summer, when it's all going off, and to think to take out 20 or 30 parking spaces during that time, which of course would be peak time for restaurants, would just make it tighter. I go to a few restaurants down there regularly in the summer, and it's just, it's quite a scene. And it can work both ways. If the parking is really difficult, it drives people to Uber, drives people to ride their bikes if they live close by. So I can see that working. But there's certain areas of the city that are really impacted. So I think we do need to treat areas as different zones and kind of figure out, and I know you're already on this, where, where there's extra, where there's room to take public parking, basically. But Newport is such a destination place, there's, we don't have enough capacity. Before COVID, we didn't have enough capacity, really. And we're always, we were always working toward trying to find more parking. And over time, we're successful in added parking. But I think demand has kept right up with it or maybe exceeded it. We don't, perhaps we don't see it now, but even now, I think in the summer, when I looked at places along the peninsula, you know, there was a lot, an awful lot going on. So it is sort of zone-specific, if you will. And particularly on the peninsula, it's really impacted, into Mr. Brenner's point, you know, there's a community that's got residential right on top of it, so that's a whole nother consideration. So there's a lot there, but definitely would support studying this. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, there we go.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yeah, real quick, so probably worth clarifying, 2, 3, and 4 can probably move faster, just because 2, 3, and 4, that, that can be a pretty quick consultant discussion. You'll still have to work with members of the public and businesses, but 2, 3, and 4, you can kind of work through on a planning level. 1 and 5 are going to be tougher, just to the point of Ms. Brenner's comments. Because, you know, when you're dealing with, and, so, I mean, like Summer House, Summer House is a great example of something that could work, because it's out on the sidewalk, it's not next to the residences. I think people are really enjoying that. It doesn't take any parking spots away. That's an easy one. It's right out there. You're seeing a bunch of, on Marine Avenue, similar idea. As long as we've got ADA compliance, that's, you know, that's easy. When you start getting into the, taking away the public parking areas, I think it works right now for, you know, the peninsula area, the Newport Pier area. I'm not so sure that works when they can actually go back into their restaurants to have our parking spaces in the area most congested for parking.
Right.
Right, so, so when you're, when you're kind of working through that, you can kind of, I think we can kind of work through this mentally and say, okay, well, that's, you know, we can, we can figure this out. But the more interesting thing will be when you get 2, 3, and 4, if you reduce some of the parking requirements, whether some of those, those parking stalls will be able to be converted into outdoor dining. I bet they will. And then at that point, the, the folks who own the restaurant have the ability to go out into their private spots without taking public spots away. So that's, that's why I'm saying 2, 3, and 4, you can probably work through a little quicker. 1 and 5 are going to be pretty site-specific and a little more, probably a little more difficult, because, yeah, I mean, there are some great examples. And then there's some examples that I think when we, when we can get, like Stag Bar, for example. Having Stag Bar out there to keep them surviving works now. But when they can go back indoors, I'm not really sure why we would take a row of parking spots or away from revenue. So anyway, that's, that's my thought.
Okay.
Ms. Dixon.
Yeah, it's just to follow up on that. I think, obviously, a consultant will come in and think of many more areas. But our initial reaction, my initial reaction is, sure, let's look at this. We're a lovely community, people love eating outdoors. But then, when you, when you stop to think about it, there are multiple layers of questions and issues. And specifically related to the peninsula, we're still in COVID. And we all know, we've had many discussions up here on various aspects of the impacts of COVID and visitors to our community. Two weeks ago, when we, beautiful summer weekend in January, Balboa Boulevard was bumper to bumper. So people are still driving cars onto the peninsula and looking for a place to park. And as we all know, when we were dealing with the potential beach closures, people, if they can't find a place to park in a public parking lot, they're going to park on the streets. So we have, to Joyce, I mean, Councilmember Brenner's point, public outreach will be critical. This sounds great, we, you know, we're all pro-business. We want our restaurants to, to grow and, and survive. But we're, we're all on top of one another, the restaurants and the residential areas in a limited parking, high-density area. And we have to make sure it works for the residents, and works for the business, and works for the public. So in the communities that you showed on your 1 to 100, the parking situations, there are a lot of public parking lots in Manhattan Beach and Dana Point, public parking structures. We don't have those kind of structures in Newport Beach. So anyway, I think there's a lot to look at. I'm, I'm positive with some restraint.
Okay.
Okay?
Understood.
Do we have any other comments from council? All right, let's roll out to the public. Do we have any comments from the community room?
Mayor Avery, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. Regarding the dining on public sidewalks, I was surprised in the staff presentation that the only concern the staff raised was increased maintenance of the public sidewalk. So I was pleased that Councilmember Dixon raised additional concerns about the loss of public space. While you were talking, I looked at our current policy, L21, and I noticed it requires restaurants to maintain at least a six-to-eight-foot clear path on the sidewalk for the public. And assuming that we are trying to encourage a culture in which people walk more to businesses and destinations, I hope the staff is not considering relaxing that current standard and allowing one category of private business to make pedestrian access and walking less comfortable for all the other destinations. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Looks not. Do we have anybody on the phone, one call? Hello, please mute any device we have, and go ahead.
Good, good afternoon, Mayor Avery and council members. Thank you very much. This is Nancy Scarborough.
Are you there? Give her just. Back? Okay. We can, uh, yeah. We'll, we'll move on. Have Mr. Blom, I think it's okay for him to return now. We'll go on to the next item. Yes, wait. Okay, thanks.
Well, while we're waiting, just for Brown Act purposes, it sounded like all the council members were supportive of moving forward with the bullet points that were outlined by Simone. Is that correct, or does anybody disagree?
Yes, and I just want to add, I like the idea of permanent work can be done. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And we can take her comments when, on the gender non-genome items, since she's not back yet. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the next item. I'll, I'll give, uh,
Okay.
Councilor Blom.
I think Mr. Blom may be coming out. And the next item is the review of commercial parking needs.
And just real quickly, before we go on to the next item, there's been a change in the FPPC rules regarding conflict. So Mr. Blom will need to announce this conflict related to the, the previous item.
Thank you. I had a previous conflict with the previous item for being in the restaurant business.
All right, Ms. Leo.
All right, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. We're, we're on the second study session item with regards to review of commercial parking needs. Again, Simone Jurdis with the Community Development Department. Now, with me is Matthew Schneider, principal planner. So the second part is really a discussion about, look at it not at restaurant, but look at it as broader commercial uses. And, you know, we've heard from our commercial property owners, and, and, you know, they're trying to figure out, what is life going to be after COVID? You know, what is the world of retail going to be? Retail is not going to go away, even though we have the Amazon effect. But retail is changing. What the commercial property owners are telling us is that they need flexibility, because they don't know what is going to be the dominant retail use. And I, and Mr. Schneider here has a presentation. If we can go ahead back to that previous study session presentation, and then we can jump from there. Again, we're, we're looking for council's feedback on, on our suggestions here. Give it a second to catch up.
Thank you, Simone. So again, continuing on with the parking theme, but again, on a much broader level. And there were three main topic areas that we want to dive into, the first being commercial parking requirements. And as Simone had indicated, you know, we've really seen a change in the retail landscape the last several years. And that's only been accelerated by the COVID pandemic. You know, this past year, 20% of consumer sales were online e-commerce, and it's projected to be 30% by 2025. And so, you know, that's a bit of a paradigm shift for us in that we're seeing, you know, the pool of retail tenants decreasing and, you know, new demand for those spaces. But as Simone had indicated, there's a need for flexibility, particularly when it comes to parking. We're seeing interest from restaurants, from healthcare facilities, boutique gyms, things along those lines. But our current parking standards, you know, are based on a more traditional brick-and-mortar retail environment. And so our suggestion is that we, we study and look at our, our retail commercial parking ratios. We look for opportunities to modernize and update. It may not necessarily be the case that there's, there's opportunities for changes, but in some areas, we think there will. And again, this can provide flexibility to those commercial retail property owners who are going to face more challenges as we move ahead finding retail tenants. Overlays are parking management districts and activity nodes is the next topic we want to touch on. And activity nodes are really, you know, they're our villages in, in the city. You know, we think of McFadden Square, Corona Del Mar, et cetera. And they're all unique and different, but they, they share a fairly universal parking constraint. And that's that they're essentially built out, and, and the lots themselves are built out. And so when a business wants to expand or intensify its use or change from one business use to another, it runs into a lot of issues with our, our parking standards. And in many cases, it could limit that kind of development. And so one of the tools we have are parking management districts or parking overlays. We've actually been working on one for the Balboa Village area. It's, it's actually a project that's going to come forward to the council on February 9th. It's already gone before the Coastal Commission, and so it's coming back for its final consideration. But what this plan does is it eliminates the need for requiring off-street parking for office, retail, and restaurant uses. There's still assembly uses, other uses that'll require the standard parking. But it provides a tool to deal with the issue I described in which, you know, existing businesses want to expand or, or change uses. This is a model that we think might work in other villages here, or activity nodes here in the community. McFadden Square is an example. And I should point out that, you know, all these areas would need to be studied closely, obviously. You know, I think we heard in the previous presentation, concerns about spillover parking to residential areas, and that's something, obviously, we as staff would be mindful of. And, you know, the availability of parking in these areas is, is unique and different as well. And so, again, you know, an opportunity to look at this as a tool in McFadden Square, the Corona Del Mar Commercial Corridor, again, a different area, proximity to residential. It's a much more linear corridor, provides different challenges. Marine Avenue is another village in which we could study. Mariners Mile. And the Canary Village. And there may be others which the council wishes to suggest. And so, again, what we're suggesting is, we, we have a tool. Again, it's going to be coming forward for your consideration on February 9th. We could study that and have it as something to implement in other areas of the community. I should also point out, you know, we have a, a number of commercial centers here in Newport Beach. When these centers are developed, they, they do it through a process called the Plan Text Amendment. And essentially, as each center was developed, they created their own development standards, their own parking standards. And so a number of the challenges that we've already talked about, they face as well, except they don't have a standard city code. They have their own u- unique specific code. And so we just want to highlight that moving forward, you know, we'd like to work with these property owners to try to make, you know, more universal language and standards. And where it makes sense, where we're making updates or changes, that perhaps there's opportunities for them to make it as well as they move forward with their projects. Curbside management, that's the final tool I wanted to talk about. Valet parking is something that we currently don't allow in the public right of way. So there's an opportunity to open that up as a tool. We've talked about ride-share, drop-off, and pickup zones. There's actually some synergy. There's, there's an opportunity maybe to have a joint-use zone for both valet and ride-share. But again, in looking at these things, we want to make sure that we're not impacting our parking supply. We have to be mindful of where these vehicles are going. We don't want them, obviously, being parked in residential areas. There has to be adequate supply of parking. And so our suggestion would be, you know, to work with a consultant and develop a, a parking management strategy and some tools that we can incorporate into the code. As I mentioned in the last presentation, we should be mindful that any of these changes will require Coastal Commission approval and review. Again, they're going to be concerned about public access, and we'll need to balance whatever we bring forward, and there'll likely be some post-implementation monitoring. And with that, we welcome your feedback and questions. We're really looking on direction. If you'd like us to bring on a consultant to coordinate and study these issues more closely and bring up some recommendations for the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, and I am fully supportive of looking and dealing with an outside consultant, because there are always going to be different aspects. I'm very supportive of what's coming forward now that the Coastal Committee has, Coastal Commission has approved the Balboa Village parking overlay, just for purposes of people's histories. This overlay was a recommendation, was passed by the council in January 2015, actually, when I first joined the council. The council before that passed this was a part of a package of Balboa Village improvements to stimulate economic activity in Balboa Village. And it was felt that to relax some of the parking requirements. We would get more restaurants and other businesses instead of small, one-person manicure studios and massage parlors, frankly. That was really the discussion. So I'm very supportive. In fact, at the time that this was passed by the city council in 2015, a number of commercial real estate brokers said to me, this is a game changer for Balboa Village. So here we come now, five years later. We will be now approving again what the, what we approved in January 2015. I don't believe the Coastal Commission has made any modifications to what we acted on.
They actually did make some modifications, and that's what we need to bring forward to the council. From a staff standpoint, we're supportive of it, but that's a, an item for next council meeting.
Okay, so that's fine, and we'll talk about it then. So I think it can be a game changer to stimulate economic development in some of these traditional village areas of our city. But I'm very excited for what's going to happen for Balboa Village, because it, and we'd have to look in February, look at, remind ourselves what the neighboring residents felt about it. I think overall, obviously, overall, they were supportive, but there were some concerns in terms of neighborhood parking impacts. But it, I'm very supportive of how we can stimulate economic activity, but also be cognizant of the parking demands in our small retail areas, because Balboa Village is one example. McFadden Square, as we just talked previously, is extremely limited in parking demand. But the concept is good. We just have to figure out how to make it work successfully. Thank you.
Mr. Blom.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for bringing this in front of us. I think it's been a long time since we've had a parking update in this city. And for those of you that are out at night and see, I think our parking is reasonable in this city. And things have changed so much. And I think that's, that's, I think, what I'm really excited about in what you guys presented today, that there's alternatives for how we can move forward into the future. Because as Diane said, we're about six years in the approval process for this. So we need to at least be a few years into the future, looking forward. And so I think a lot of the parking overlays are great, you know. And the same thing when we talk about Fashion Island and some of these other districts. We have to look towards the future as well, that we have a lot of changes in the atmosphere when it comes to retail, commercial, and what's happening in our city. And, and that's revenue for all of us. And that's important to make sure we stay where we are. And I'm just, you know, I am concerned with seeing empty office buildings, empty commercial spots, and giving that incentive for new businesses to come in, no matter what they are, to find a hold in Newport so they can start generating revenue here. And that's not to the detriment of the residents, that's to the benefit. And I think that we have a, a lot of opportunity right now, especially, to start working some of those partnerships. we can move forward with kind of a broader appeal for each village, and directing it to each individual area, because there are residents, and we do want to be concerned about those, but we also want to make sure that what the residents want is a walkable village, and I think Corona Del Mar, as Joy spoke to, that's what they want, they want to enjoy their village, they don't want to have to drive to another one. And so, if we can continue to build upon that overlay idea, I think we're looking in a beautiful way. So thank you, guys, for putting such hard work in on that.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yeah, I have a similar thought, so coming back to my comment from the last study session item that I'll bring forward now, because we're talking about curbside management plan, you know, the beauty of setting up, you know, one, taking away maybe one or two public parking spots for a valet plan, is that in those spots, the two spots you lose, you're still probably gaining 10 or 15 spots where people aren't parking in residential areas, because now you've got a valet that's a more tightly controlled parking environment, and they know exactly where to go, and you have sufficient parking for, in a designated area. You know, like I think, for example, of CDM and PCH, I think you'd probably have, you'd probably find more restaurants instead of, instead of so many real estate agents. So if you, if we had, you know, so, I mean, if you had parking areas where, and, by the way, on a side note, this, the, the node idea probably stimulates the idea of actually private industry coming in and putting in some parking structures from time to time, because you may find that it's actually more valuable to someone to build a parking structure to accommodate more parking, so that they can put a little bit more dense commercial area.
Sure.
Right? So if you, if you end up in a situation where you have someone, so for example, take Five Crowns, so Five Crowns has that huge surface lot, I mean, they could, in theory, if we worked this out properly, you could allow for a handful more restaurants in that corridor area, by having the ability for them to lease that, some of those spaces to a, a few other restaurants, those restaurants using one or two parking spots in front of their area, so that they, now, what we have is, we've got, like I said, let's say 10 spaces or so, you take 10 spaces, give them to another restaurant to use for valet, you use one public space in front of that restaurant for the valet, now you've taken those 10 people who would, like Perotti, for example, I've never, I promised you, I've never parked, when I go to Perotti, in the, in the residential area, I promise, but it, but what I'm saying, instead of finding that a parking area like Perotti is full, which it always, it kind of always is, and then you're full in front, because they're so close to some of the other areas, if you had, if you gave them one spot, and they'd have to want to do this, but if you gave them one spot and said, valet, and then they were able to use someone else's parking lot, parking spaces, because we were able to reduce some of the density, you know, you end up in a situation where we're taking, we're taking people, we're getting more people in the area and less people in the residential area. So that's, that's, when I was thinking about this, and you can apply the same metrics and discussions into the, into the Marine Avenue, you could do the same thing, Marine Avenue's a little harder, but on the, but in the peninsula, I just think that there's a way now, especially as we're talking through the Uber and Lyft, you know, drop-off, get going kind of situation. If you had, and that's another curbside management issue, if you had a designated space where if you, you know, it's kind of, you kind of put up a sign and just say, Uber drop-off, well, you know, then it's a five-minute parking loading, unloading zone, right? And we're just taking into account the concepts, so that people aren't double parking, causing backup on PCH during the summertime, you know, stuff like that. I like this idea, I think, I just think that we've got it, I said this in the last time, I'll say it again, we just have to take into account current realities of what, how people are driving and, and getting dropped off, and frankly, you know, from a DUI perspective, encourage people to take more
Right.
ride-share programs, so.
One of the things I'm intrigued by is whether we could create more spaces by having designated golf cart parking, because so many more of our residents are purchasing golf carts and using those to get down to dinner at night and get back home, so I'm just wondering, you know, if we could look at that and, and see where we can encourage, maybe create two parking spaces for golf carts where there was one before for an average-sized car.
Understood. Great, do we have any more comments from council? Being done?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just a couple others, so it might be worth adding a few other areas, for example, on Bull Point C, just, I mean, there's, there's a handful, I mean, so for example, I mean, Bayside, you could kind of look at a little bit of Bayside, that area, that, that parking area's always been interesting. The, I know you had a picture of it, but I'd probably also, frankly, I might even include the Corona Del Mar Plaza over here, I know it's Irvine Company, it's private, but we may want to take a look at that, that honestly is probably notoriously one of the hardest areas to get in and out of in the city. And then, over, over up in, sorry, give me just a second, up in, on West Cliff area as well, I'd probably take a look at West Cliff, you know, kind of where Hot Cakes is. I know that, that, again, that's probably not a, it's not a huge, well, anyway, I think that that's probably another area that is primed for revitalization, and so they should probably, we should probably be taking a look at that. I'm sure I'm missing a few here and there, but, I mean, that's, that's what, those are areas I was thinking of.
So if I, if I hear correctly, Councilmember O'Neill, just include areas that are not part of a PC text, that are just part of the standard, standard zoning code, and can benefit from some type of overlay or curb management.
Yeah, and there, like I said, I think there are only a couple,
Okay.
as I'm kind of thinking this through, but I think it's worth at least including a couple of those areas in there.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I just want to piggyback on Joy's comment. Ironically, I just purchased a street legal golf cart, I've waited two months for it, but it is fabulous machine, and it's very safe, and I'm looking forward to using it for that exact purpose, to get myself a place to park.
Okay. It's battery-operated, I assume.
Great, we'll go out to the public, anybody in the community room wish to speak to this? Seeing none, anyone on the phone? Good.
Just for purposes of the Brown Act, it sounded like all the council members were supportive of the bullet points that were laid out, is that correct, or does anyone disagree? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comments on agenda or non-agenda items? Any phone calls? Thank you. Before we adjourn to closed session, Mr. Hart, do you have an announcement?
I do, thank you very much, Mayor Avery. The city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with labor negotiator Barbara Salvini, discuss labor negotiations with all labor unions as set forth under item 4A on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, adjourn to closed session.